Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. Could have a roll call, please, Beth?
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Here.
Councilmember DePorter?
Here.
Councilmember Magazine?
Here.
Councilmember Yates?
Present.
Councilmember Tolles?
Here.
And Councilmember LaJee is absent.
Okay, thank you. We're just going to take a moment away from our agenda. Everybody has probably heard of the tragedy that happened today in Fountain Hills. And we're all very sad and praying for the people involved and their families, first responders. We thank them for all of their work today and everything that they did for us. But we have, we've asked Deacon Smith from Church of the Ascension has been very kind to come on such short notice to offer a prayer for us today. So if we could all stand?
You know, I was literally just had sat down in my chair and I turned on the news and I saw the tragedy when the call came in. So, you know, our hearts go out to everybody, but just to begin, let's put ourselves in the presence of the Lord and just to begin with some silence to just reflect on the things, the tragedy and the poor people who died and also the responders, but also we need to pray for the poor gentleman who was involved in creating that accident. You know, his life has probably changed forever. So let us just pray in the silence of our hearts. [coughs] Almighty God, we know you are the way, the truth, and the life. We ask you to come and be with us this evening. We ask you to please send out your blessings to the families of the victims of that tragic accident. Please bless all of them. Help in the healing process. I'm just going to read a gospel from John, a reading from the Holy Gospel according to John. Martha said to Jesus, "Lord, if you had been here, my brother would not have died. But even now I know that whatever you ask of God, God will give you." And Jesus said to her, "Your brother will rise." Martha said to him, "I know he will rise in the resurrection on the last day." And Jesus told her, "I am the resurrection and the life. Whoever believes in me, even if he dies, will live. And everyone who lives and believes in me will never die. Do you believe this?" She said to him, "Yes, Lord. I have come to believe that you are Christ, the Son of God, the one who is coming into this world." The gospel of the Lord. And what that gospel just reminds us that, you know, those victims today are probably most likely in heaven with God and life has not ended. It has just changed. So as we move forward with our meeting tonight, let us thank God for his many blessings and the things that he does to take care of us. And also ask, we ask you, Lord, to heal our town during this time and heal all the victims. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. So this is our special session, consideration of capital improvement projects with discussion and possible direction to staff regarding proposed changes to town fees. Grady, did you want to start?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, tonight, you had a little bit of a preview of the proposed capital improvement program when we had the council retreat last month. As we're starting to get into the middle of the budget process, we have fine tuned the, both the current fiscal year capital improvement projects, and you'll see that tonight, as well as the more detail into the proposed projects for next year. Also, the second part of this meeting, following the capital improvement program, we will also go over our proposed changes to the town fees. And under state law now, we have to start this process much earlier. You recall in the past, we'd have just done this as part of the budget process, but we're required to do the noticing and discussion much earlier than what we used to. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Justin Weldy. Justin is our Public Works Director, as you're aware, but part of his role is to be the project manager for a number of these projects. And you'll hear from some of the other directors as it affects their areas, the projects, that they'll go up, come up to the podium and address these. But I'll go ahead and turn it over to Justin, who's going to go over the initial summaries of these projects.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. The purpose of tonight's is to go over the capital projects overview. And it starts with the capital expenditures, and they are made in five different areas. The revenue is from development impact fees, 50% of the construction sales tax, and any excess revenue at the end of the year, and intergovernmental funds or grants. The first one is our operational capital. This is expenditures of a one-time nature. The second one is our vehicle replacement program. This expenditure is based on a schedule of useful life of major equipment and vehicles. The third is facilities replacement. Expenditures are based on a schedule of facilities, infrastructures, useful life and replacement. Number four is the pavement management plan. Expenditures based on a planned street maintenance or replacement program, and that is currently funded at $2 million annually, with the first part of that being pavement maintenance and the second part of that being pavement replacement. The final is the capital improvement project. So this is major capital, one-time capital expenditures. The first slide, excuse me, are current CIP projects that have been initiated or have been completed. And I'm going to move through these slides of what has been initiated and/or completed. If you have any questions about any of these, feel free to ask that as we move through here. The first one is the miscellaneous drainage. So this was initiated several years ago and allows the street department a tool to add additional drainage pipes or channels or ditches or other simple things like that when needed and has been used. The next one, which is the downtown lighting, which is $100,000, that one is actually completed. That is whenever we changed the incandescent lighting in the street lamp posts on the avenue to LEDs.
Mayor, excuse me.
Councilman Magazine?
I've got a fair number of questions. Should I wait, go through them all, or do you want me to go as we?
Do they relate? Would you rather ask as each one?
It's entirely up to you. And keep in mind that these are the 1718 capital projects that have been initiated and/or completed.
Well, the miscellaneous drainage, $50,000, is that additional to what we're already doing?
It is not. This is a separate fund just for projects that may or may not come up during the fiscal year. This year, out of that budget, we are going to spend about $25,000. A few thousand dollars of that is to extend a large pipe under Shea that is necessary. And the second part of that funding is to eliminate vegetation in the drainage channel along Panorama Wash so we can begin the design of de-watering that area, which has created a challenge over the last few years.
I'm going to be asking this question a lot. What if we didn't do it this year? What's the impact?
The impact to the latter part, which would be the Panorama Wash, would be a delay in dealing with the nuisance water that's created a little bit of challenge between the Town of Fountain Hills and the neighboring reservation in regards to this runoff.
How long has this been going on?
I would, certainly long before I was here, there were issues, and at least a percentage of that has been addressed by the restarting of the well that is in this area that pushes this spring water back into Fountain Park. So it's certainly ongoing, but it's for years.
Thank you.
Councilmember Magazine, you recall when we had the joint meeting with the Fort McDowell Tribal Community, this was something that they actually brought up at that meeting.
Okay, Justin, go on.
Fire station two relocation, so we have a revised total for that, which includes the total project costs, and we'll get into that a little bit more. So obviously, it's initiated and underway. The Chiller installation for the town campus, that project has been completed. The HISAP grant, which is the Highway Safety Improvement Program for the stop sign relocation, so we have deferred that to next year, and that is grant funding. There will be no expenditure from the town's budget for that one.
Mayor?
Councilman Magazine?
You're going pretty fast, and I was writing something. Did you just discuss the Golden Eagle concrete replacement?
No, sir, I haven't.
Oh, okay, I'm just going down the slides.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Yates?
Thank you. The grant funding that you're referring to, that was not a matching grant, you know, 20-80 or 50-50 or anything, 100% grant funded?
Correct.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor.
The second slide is the Civic Center bus stop improvements, which we have initiated, and we are in the final design of that for the civil work, which is the onsite concrete and the renovations to the parking lot, which are minor. And we have made a selection for the shelter, and we are currently waiting on the shop drawings for that. And we intend to complete that project before the end of this fiscal year. And again, this is also grant money. The Adaro Canyon Trailhead, that is underway and anticipated to be finished, and we'll get into that, I think, in August or September, depending on, obviously, upcoming months in season. The Plaza Fountain Side Courtyard area improvements, obviously, were deferred by the council, and so that one is, will be presented at a later date. The video surveillance cameras for the town campus, which-
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Justin.
Yes, sir.
When was that deferred? So you're not suggesting-
Actually, council didn't defer that. I deferred that. And the reason why is that the, we actually went out and sought to get design for this, and the design costs were just crazy for this. It came back, I believe, anywhere between $65 and over $110,000. One of the firms actually said they thought it was going to cost $600,000 or so to do this. And so we were just really concerned because we've been seeing all of our, around that same time, we started seeing that the fire station costs went up and the Darrow Canyon. So we just decided to defer this and kind of regroup and figure out what we're going to do because we also think Kevin, our park supervisor, believes he has some really good experience in turfing, and he wants to give a shot at trying to get it re-turfed. And so that might change our direction altogether in that area of Fountain Plaza. So-
Just so I make sure I understand, so the ones that say deferred, we're not deferring to this next year?
It's still in the, it's still in this capital improvement program. It just means that we're not undertaking it this year and it may be in an outlying year.
Okay, thank you.
The video surveillance camera project started right here on the campus, and that portion has been completed, and we intend to do some additional work at Golden Eagle Park and Fountain Park. And then we will be also looking at Fort Peets. And obviously, there's a considerable amount of vandalism, and staff believes that this is very important. It's a discouragement and also allows us to tool to work with the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office. The Fountain Hills Boulevard widening, Shea Boulevard to Segundo Drive, that was deferred for the 1718.
And the alley paving?
Well-
Let's get that one deferred.
Correct. The unpaved alley, which is Phase Four, was also deferred and moved out to a later year in that year. We will certainly discuss in the future projects.
Mayor, you just said 1718. That confused me for-
Well, this, were the ones that were in the original 1718, and so some of them were deferred by the town manager, and the others, mayor and council asked the staff to defer or move out to later years. And in this particular one, on the unpaved alley, was, the direction was to move it out to later years by mayor and council.
Thank you.
The Fountain Hills Boulevard shoulder paving, that is initiated and underway and will be going to bid here, I believe, in April, if I am not mistaken, and will be starting soon after that.
Mayor?
Councilman Magazine?
I'm just talking to you while you're on the call.
Okay, you can.
But it says deferred. Deferred to when? To this year?
So it's deferred in this year, which is 1718. So the next fiscal year available will be 1819, and we can certainly look at those slides in regards to that and see, but yes, the unpaved alley has been placed into the 1819 for consideration of mayor and council and direction of staff.
I guess what's confusing me, and maybe not anybody else, is that when it says deferred, in some cases deferred till this next year, in some cases, it's just out years.
That is correct. But you're, you'll get clarity. We just want to give you an update as to the current year's fiscal year projects that were approved in the budget and explain to you where we are with these. And in some cases, you're right, they were deferred and they're not going to be undertaken this year. Others were identified. Just go ahead and request consideration that these be pushed out. And so you're going to see a number of these when we go through the 1819. You're going to see these reappear, or they'll be even out, further out years as well.
But that doesn't mean we have to do them next year. It just means that-
Right.
I was just confused by the word deferred on some of these, not knowing which ones are deferred to this year.
We should have probably, we should have probably put more like deferred and then put the fiscal year or something. We, we'll do that next time.
We'll provide that clarification, absolutely. The last one is the wayfinding signs, and obviously, that is in design, and staff is about to look at the final two proposals, and we will bring that forward to mayor and council at a later date.
Okay.
So that is a total of $8,167,168 for the, for the stuff that was approved and is initiated and/or underway. The last one on this slide is the vehicle replacement fund, and we intend to replace two light duty vehicles this year. And the ladder truck, which you just saw, the two light duty vehicles are for vehicles that will be coming out of service for community services in the parks.
Do we have a cost for that, or?
For?
For the trucks?
For the two trucks.
Is that included?
Approximately $47,000, $41,000. And I don't have that number in front of me, but it's approximately $40,000 for the two.
Okay.
And explain to me why we need those now?
The vehicles that are currently in use have reached their mileage and/or their year date based on the vehicle replacement program that was approved by mayor and council years ago.
Have we looked at whether or not, I understand we have a policy. Have we looked at whether or not, for example, with light duty trucks, we might advance the age of these by repairs rather than replacing them?
I have not, no.
The ladder truck, I think, is a different category. But I'd like to see us at least consider looking at these trucks and despite the mileage and so on. I mean, as we know, any vehicle will run forever if you replace enough of it. And so the question is, what would we have to do to extend the life of them rather than spending part of that $41,000?
Grady, have we looked in the past at the feasibility of?
So we actually have very long useful lives on these. Do you remember what it is on trucks?
10 years.
10 years. And so some of our experience shows us that we start getting into quite a bit of maintenance costs on these where it ends up costing us on the maintenance side. And so that, that starts affecting the operating budget. So with this, the replacement fund, you know, it is dedicated just for, it's a, how would you say that, Craig? It is a self-sustained or a sustainable fund. So we contribute the life cycle of each vehicle on an annual basis into this fund, and then we built in the cost for inflationary factors. So when it comes up and it's due to be replaced, the money is there, correct?
That is correct. And the fund is, at its current funding level, adequate to fund future replacements with no additional funding required from the general fund.
But the challenge is, is if we start having to pick up the costs on the maintenance side, and we're going into these budget years that we know that are really bad, then we're kind of be, kind of bleeding. I can't think of a better term. So I think that this is prudent. We have done in the past, we have actually deferred purchasing in the past when, when the vehicle replacement fund was not at 100% funded. And that's how we got through it. And we went through the budget years, many years, when we didn't have adequate funding for this. Unfortunately, this, no, I shouldn't say unfortunately, but our, our finance practices and rules is that we cannot touch this money for, you know, that's in here. It can only be used for the vehicle replacements.
So Grady, if you, let's say you decided to do maintenance on these vehicles, and so you didn't put it in the budget to replace them, and then sometimes during the year it got so expensive that we couldn't even use the truck, you wouldn't be able to purchase another one then, right? Because it wouldn't be budgeted?
Well, in theory, but we really can't even use, this is like a capital fund. We cannot use capital on maintenance. It's just, it's a bad practice.
Okay.
Do we assume with replacement, we're talking brand new as opposed to something that's two or three years old?
Well, we have, we have had a tendency of purchasing new because we really get a really good deal on fleet costs. We sometimes get, these two ones, was it off of a Mesa contract or was it Chandler?
City of Mesa contract.
City of Mesa. So they buy quite a few vehicles, and so we're able to piggyback onto an existing contract. Sometimes we dovetail onto state contracts. So we're getting deals on vehicles that you couldn't get as a, as a general public on vehicles.
Pretty obvious why I'm raising these to parrot what you just said a few minutes ago. We're facing very tough times.
Right.
And I think we have to consider everything.
No, and they're fair questions. And this is, this is what we're here for tonight, is, you know, for you to ask these questions and to kind of work through this.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Yates?
To put more context, what are we purchasing the vehicles on average?
Last year, we received seven vehicles because we had seven of them that were outdated. And this year, there's only two.
And we're buying them cash, right? We're not financing or leasing?
We are purchasing them for cash, yes. And the unit price for these nicely equipped pickup trucks is $21,000-
Oh, my God.
-from the contract. And then there's some, a minimal amount of additional funding to equip them with toolboxes and lights.
So 10 years, it's roughly $2,000 a year, and easily the maintenance of this could exceed that when you start getting a vehicle up in years.
Certainly. And initially, they are under warranty by the manufacturer.
For the 10-year?
These do not have a 10-year on the entire thing, but the drive train and a couple of other ones do. It's a five to seven on average.
But a $21,000 acquisition cost over 10 years, you know, $2,100 a year, that's tremendous.
We also, I believe it was you, Councilmember Yates, that asked us also to look at leasing options, and we were doing that with the fire truck. Craig actually did that, and when you start factoring in the leasing costs or the, what would be the, I guess it would be the money factor or the interest factor.
Yeah.
We really found that in this day and age, even though interest rates are at historical lows, it's still costing us more money than if we just used present value to purchase today.
That's great.
Have we looked at extended warranties as a possibility?
We have not.
You said the warranty on a new truck is approximately what?
There's a split warranty on it, and I don't have that language in front of me, so I don't want to be misleading, but I believe the drive train is seven years, and then there are some other components that are five years and some that are three years. So it carries down depending on what they're covering for that warranty.
I'd like to, I'd like to ask that we look at extended warranties. We're talking 10 years as our policy. I have no idea what an extended warranty would cost on these trucks.
We will certainly look into that.
It might be well worth it.
Sure. We will certainly look into it.
The next slide is the CIP funding status as of March 6th of this year, which is $7,563,993. Of that, the construction sales tax is $153,385. Interest is $2,510. And reimbursements and other funding is $1,254,484. So the total available funds for the 1718 would be $8,974,372. Less the projects initiated but not yet completed, which is the miscellaneous drainage for $50,000. The relocation of fire station number two for $4,58,000. The Adaro Canyon Trailhead for $1,866,165. The video surveillance cameras for $50,000. Fountain Hills Boulevard shoulder paving, $284,740. And the wayfinding signs design, $95,500. Total projects initiated but not yet complete equals $6,404,405. The available CIP balance after that is $2,569,967.
Councilman Yates?
Thank you. Just for the record, the shoulder paving, that stacked a grant with that as well. So we're getting almost a $600,000 project for $284,000?
That is correct. The next portion is going to be the proposed fiscal year 1819 capital improvement projects. The first one, and I'm going to stop just briefly here, so there are several slides in here that cover several different departments. I, along with Community Services Director Rachel Goodwin and Marissa Moore, and lastly, Craig, will speak on each one of these slides if they move forward, if you have a question.
Bob has nothing to say. He's staying out of it.
Fire station number two relocation. For the fiscal year 1819, our estimated cost for that is $2,312,165. Of that, $254,165 are construction services. This covers the construction services. Will cover any special inspections that are needed and also assistance from the architectural firm, and will also include money for the owner's allowance, should it become necessary to use that. The funding for this is $3,652,694, which is from CIP, $255,306 from development fees, and $93,500 from Epcor. The Epcor portion is for the shared driveway and the relocation of their water lines under the driveway. This driveway will be used in the future by not only the Town of Fountain Hills and the Fire Department, but for, with Epcor as well, for access to their back washing lagoon that is a rather large concrete structure in the bottom of the wash.
So who would be responsible for the upkeep?
The town will be responsible for the maintenance of the driveway.
Of the driveway?
Epcor's responsibility is in the initial construction.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, along the same line, so it's a one-time $93,000 payment for easement in perpetuity?
Correct.
Okay. And that does cover the expenses of the water lines, or are they paying for those?
It covers the expenses of the water line and the construction of the driveway.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
The next project is the Adaro Canyon Trailhead. The total project cost for this is $2,382,362. The estimate for the fiscal 1819 year is $350,000. The funding source for this is $1,824,599 from development fees and $557,763 from The next item is the unpaved alley project. So this is Phase Four, and this is basically parallel to Colony Drive. And the project cost for this is $255,000. And this project here, let me pull my notes up. here, let me pull my notes up. Was initially identified in a resolution, and the resolution number was 2007-45 to implement projects to reduce, reduce the PM10 emissions. Up to date, the town has completed three phases, and so the intent with this was to bring our alleyways into compliance with PM10 emissions, and, and mitigate or minimize the amount of dust created from the use of these alleyways.
Mayor?
Councilman Magazine?
I'm looking at Phase, what I'll call Four, which is the red line.
Correct.
$255,000. Has that ever been paved?
It has not. It currently has millings on it that we've salvaged from projects to minimize the dust.
And where are we, what is the law?
I do not recall what the law is.
Well, it's, 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 well, it's federal air quality, and so PM10 is particulate matter, 10, it's, it's the micron, and so that's the particulate matter that they have concluded that causes, you know, lung illnesses and diseases and so forth. All the various cities around the valley have what we call, we're all in a non-attainment area, so Maricopa County is in a non-attainment area, and through MAG, the Maricopa Association and governments, we all agree to take on measures that will reduce PM10 and other forms of air pollution. This, this particular project here, I know, has been deferred and pushed back, as probably you guys can remember many, many times. So, I, I can see if the council wanted to push this back again, I don't think anything's going to happen to us immediately, but at some point, we really do need to get it done. And it's only going to get, go up in cost to, to finish it.
Grady, is there any risk that we could get fined because of it?
I'm not so much concerned about fines, but I am concerned about any future projects that would receive either federal money, or MAG transportation dollars that are pass-throughs through MAG. And so I think that the risk of, of not spending the $255,000 is potentially bigger as we go on by not addressing it. So I'd rather try to, we've got some projects right now that are affected by CMAC money that we get. We also have some MAG dollars, and so I, I would rather not lose the potential for those dollars.
Because we know what MAG went through when we had the big dust storm, and
Right.
It cost an awful lot of money to defend that, and a stack like this high of documents just to prove to the federal government that we're in the desert.
Exactly.
And there's dust.
Yeah. So, so it is unfortunate. It is something that I think needs to be done. Is it, you know, can we wait and defer another year? We probably could, but I think as you're saying, that the capital improvement budget is continuing to decline, and so we may just push it off, but then we'll never do it, and then it might affect us in the future.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Justin, what's this alley used for?
It is the primary access for a few businesses in and out of the alleyway, and it's also the primary access for the removal of, or dumping the dumpsters along that way, along the alley. There's probably three or four dumpsters. The very beginning of it, which is much closer down to Panorama that's already completed, is the only access to the condos right there on that corner. That's actually part of the alley as well.
So this is possibly even a fire access, the second fire access to those townhomes?
It indeed is. That was why they were required to pave the alley. Their portion of it, up to their driveway.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Justin, is this the last of the unpaved alleys that we've committed to doing?
It is not. We have one more section, which we refer to as Phase Five, which is on the northeast corner of town, just off of Fountain Hills Boulevard, near the SRP substation. It runs from Glenbrook, behind the, what used to be the Greek Restaurant, and then turns west and comes into Fountain Hills.
Do you remember the estimated cost for that?
No. It has been deferred so long that I've not looked at the cost for that recently.
Whatever it is, double it.
Councilman Magazine?
If that hasn't been paved, and it hasn't been paved for a long, long time, why is this one more important than that one?
At the time this was initiated, it has a much heavier traffic flow, and also was believed to be more expensive at the time. And again, I don't have the numbers for Phase Five, but this was the, the one that was selected by mayor and council at that time to move forward on.
This one also, the only reason why I would suggest this one is that we can show that we're done, and we were in compliance on, with this particular project. So that's the only reason why I would recommend.
One follow-up.
Sure.
Who does that, other inspectors that come out and take a look to see whether or not we paved it?
Yes.
How do they know there aren't really?
Yeah, well, we have to actually file a report with MAG that shows, each year we have to file a, a new report that shows all the different things that we agreed to do, and, and where we are with those. So, they will review this annually.
Yeah, one last thing. It'd make any sense at all to do half of it this year, and do half of it next year.
It's a good question.
I'm looking at $255,000. A lot of money.
Cost mobilization, well, I guess I'd ask that we look at.
I, I, I think we can. I think what I see, though, is, again, we can get one complete project finalized and done, and we can get credit for it at least. But we can go ahead, and I guess we can, before we have our budget hearings, we can actually try to get back to you on that, but I'm, I think I'm hearing that maybe the mobilization and some other cost factors may not be.
Very costly, especially a project this, I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, it's okay.
Dennis chiming in. A project, and $255,000 is a lot of money, but in the scheme of, of construction projects, it's not. So mobilization alone for something, you'll, you'll add 30%, 40% for coming out twice. The cost of asphalt, if petroleum changes remotely, that, there, there's so many variables. If I may, Madam Mayor, I'm with you on, on what you're looking at, but infrastructure, health and safety, any of these types of things, as long as we have something that makes sense and, and we can afford, I, I think we move forward. The things that, and I appreciate your, your conversation, but this would not be one of the ones that, from an operational standpoint, that you defer or, or try to go on the cheap. At least, that's my two cents.
We also have a commitment as part of MAG to follow what, what we've all agreed to. All the cities have agreed to do this, and so it's, it's our obligation to meet the requirements.
I understand, and, and I think the word that Cecil used was afford, and that's exactly what I'm looking at. And you know that we have enough money here, by my calculation, to further defer a number of these things, and put another half to three-quarters of a million dollars into roads. So you have to, I think you have to balance things. You have to have trade-offs. And so the question is, what's really worth it? What do we really need to do? If it's health, and if it's safety, health and safety, I totally agree. If we're going to lose a grant, I agree. But there are others where they're not health and safety, and we're not going to lose a grant. And the question is, do we really want to spend that money now, given where we are? I mean, personally, I'd like to see us not make any, I know we can't vote, I prefer that we not make any decisions on any of this until we find out whether or not we're going to have an influx of money, which we'll, we'll find out in May. Now, I know it doesn't affect this particular, this particular account, but it does in the sense that we could afford to do something, some more with roads or some other things. So it's just, I, I see it as being trade-offs and not as straightforward as it may, may seem.
I just want to clarify, I'm sorry, I just want to clarify that this is, this is a special session, and so you guys can, the, the council can actually provide direction the way it's agendized, if I'm understanding it correctly.
Provide staff direction, but we.
This is a council.
Right, exactly.
Councilman Yates?
My other question, and you already know this, many of these accounts are, are specified that they must and only can be used for the project at, at hand. So shaving or deferring some of this, is there that option of throwing it into roads? On, on, let's use this one, for example. Hypothetically, if the council decided, you know what, let's push this off, and let's put $255,000 into roads, from this account, would that be allowable?
It, it's coming right out of the, the capital improvement budget, so you could substitute, you could substitute projects and such within the capital improvement fund.
Okay.
A couple of last things that I would like for the mayor and council to keep in mind. This particular area is prone to illegal dumping, primarily that consists of furniture and appliances, but we also have a considerable amount of yard waste that is dumped down there. And so town staff about every two weeks, or when notified, we go down there and clean it up. And we believe that these improvements, which will include a curb on some of this, will either make it more challenging, or possibly stop this, because it consumes a considerable amount of our time. Another thing is this seems to be a favorite location for somebody that consumes adult beverages. And they, so they have an area down there where they park and enjoy their beverages, and, and toss the containers out, and it's the same ones every time, with little to no change, so.
This seems like that's.
Throw them somewhere else.
I would ask that you keep the illegal dumping in mind, because it is a challenge townwide, but in this particular location, we have a few more challenges with that.
Well, I think that's important, plus what Vice Mayor brought up as being an emergency exit, do have homes that are further down on that road. And I think our commitment to MAG, I mean, we can't be a part of MAG and then say, well, this thing we don't want to do. We have deferred these for many years. Most of the cities are finished. So I, I think it's necessary. It's necessary to, to maintain our standing in MAG. It's maintained to make sure that ADEQ doesn't come down on us because it, it's an emergency access. It's all of the reasons that you gave. I, I think we have to have it, we have to do it. Compared to, I know how much roads cost. I don't know how much you could actually do for $255,000, but I think it's worth it to get this paved and be done with it. And I think we've actually added, we've discussed these so many times, and we've whittled it down to these, that these were the ones we really wanted to do, and now we're rethinking it all over again. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I agree with that. We, we've pushed this down the road. We've kicked the can down the road now for probably six years on this particular area, and, and I don't want to sound like a broken record, but we have, you know, Fountain Hills is a living, breathing town that we've got to continue to, to help beautify and make a lot, and make livable, and this is one of the projects that has been, once again, kicked down the road. I appeal that we should go ahead and complete. And, Councilman Magazine, I, I clearly hear what you're saying, and totally agree with it, but this is one that I think we need to really consider to do.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm not, Mayor, I'm not making a judgment yet.
Yes, you are.
Well, no, I'm, I'm, you know, when I hear about MAG and so on, and they do come out and inspect, I mean, this is information I didn't have. So that's why I'm asking questions. So, you know, I'm against, my, my reaction is to be against some of these, until I get further information.
Okay, so you're okay with this one now?
I didn't say that. We're not voting anyway.
You can go on. Justin?
The next project is the Way Finding Signs. This was shown in the current fiscal year, and so this number is based on having these signs constructed and installed for the 1819 fiscal year.
Mayor? I know we voted on.
What's your name again?
Yeah, you, you'd like me to leave? I know we voted on, on the design, but I will tell you, and I was in the minority, I'm absolutely against doing this at this time, and I'm very much against having them go ahead and build the signs and place them. I just don't think the timing is right. Frankly, it's being used as one of two or three things that the council has voted on, that has spread all over the community, that people are using as an, as a reason to say, they're spending money on these things. What do they need more money for? I just don't see, seeing in the paper, that we're, that we voted to spend $150,000 for new signs. I think it's a huge mistake, and I know we're not voting, but I can't help but express myself on this.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Yates?
My only two cents here, along the same lines as what Dennis said about some of these deferred, I view, I view the signs, and I was in the majority that voted for the design, and the design bids came in extremely high, but we were able, based on the scope we wrote, to find the best designer in wayfinding at the lowest, almost half of what the next lowest bid was. This is an infrastructure, and this is one of those where, this is almost like the first thing that you're, you see when you come in. I, I think it's extremely important, and the 150, where, way I would manage this, and we've already talked about it in our group, is maybe do, you know, do it in sets. Instead of doing all the signs at once, that maybe we do the main on the, on the, uh, uh, main arteries coming in, and then the next year, do another, you know, two or three signs. There's some flexibility in here. Again, I hear what you're saying. When I bring my family back to Cleveland, that's when my son starts pointing out, ew, look at that bridge, ew, look at that sign, ew, look at that, and.
That's Cleveland.
Fair enough, but again, and this is one of the nicer signs that we're looking at, but it's, it's a, ew, look at that sign. That's not a reason to go out and spend money, but the, these are the kind of things that, that people see. They are a necessity, especially in today's world, how do you get around Fountain Hills? But this is one of those things, for 10 years, we've been, we've been working on this, so.
With all due respect, this is not a necessity. People tend, people find their ways around Fountain Hills without new signs.
Well, visitors don't. We hear from the, we hear from the chamber all the time that people can't find their way.
I'm sure.
And that's why they put up those ugly temporary signs up and down the road. They really look like crap, so.
I would hope that.
We want our town to look nice. I mean, there's a lot of things we could stop. We could stop watering the grass, but then we're going to live with brown grass, and we don't want that either.
Well, if, if it may turn out to be different than we want, we're going to have brown grass. We're going to have lots of problems. I guarantee it, because we're beyond the muscle and down to the bone now. And so.
Okay, you've said that before.
Well, I'm saying it again.
Okay.
I just want to say that I would hope that we defer any voting on any of this until we hear from the citizens.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman DePorter?
Hi, it's Nick. Hello. I, I just wanted to just, I'll quickly chime in and just say, on this one, I, I definitely agree with, with Councilman Magazine on this. Although I see this as desired and great infrastructure to have, you know, in this time where we are with limited funds, I'm, I'm deferring to infrastructure that has implications on public safety. So, I'm with Alan. This is one of the ones that is being dragged all over social media as us being not stewards of public funds, and that's not the only reason. I just don't see them as vital. I think people find things different ways these days, although I think signs are cool, they're just not cool right now.
Justin?
The next slide is the proposed improvements to the Civic Center, and so this is referred to as a Centennial Circle, and if any of you have been out there, you'll see that the concrete is buckling and cracking and raising. And so over the last few years, staff has been grinding down these sharp edges. But, but this one is, is really a challenge for us, because oftentimes, we may not be able to catch some of this stuff, and we are gravely concerned about trips and falls on the town campus.
Is this only for concrete, or, because there's other things in the Centennial Circle that?
This is to address primarily the concrete, but while we are addressing the concrete issue, we will also address the large roots that are the, for lack of a better description, the root cause of this problem, and make some minor changes to that. Excuse me, initially, when this was brought before the mayor and council, there was some landscape improvements included in that. Since that time, we have actually replaced the trees on the south side of the Centennial Circle that abut the community garden. And so, a percentage of the landscaping has been completed, but there will certainly be some adjustments as we move forward. And obviously, that would be in the direction of the mayor and council.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Justin, I would recommend that when we start removing the concrete and preparing to replace it, since it is exposed aggregate, we'll never match the color anyway, that I would highly recommend, considering as we take the sections out, going back in with a paver sidewalk in lieu of concrete that's going to do the same thing again.
Which is certainly an option.
That, that's actually a great idea, because then, when you do have issues, you just replace the individual pavers, and you don't have to do all this extensive work like we're seeing. So that, that could have saved us a fortune.
Well, as you walk around the fountain, and you see areas that are truly trip hazards on the fountain walk, I would, I would think that it would be more cost-effective to consider starting replacing the walkway with pavers in the areas that are
Good point.
trip hazards.
And in regards to this location, that was one of the options that was put. And in regards to this location, that was one of the options that was put forth to mayor and council, was the pavers. I'm fortunate that I have a previous director's comments.
That came from the previous director?
Yes.
I've never known him to recommend pavers for anything.
Right here in the footnotes.
Maybe I was asleep.
Project could replace.
Check the handwriting.
Project could replace concrete with brick pavers.
You sure that wasn't Bob writing that in?
Was it costed out?
Okay, let's move along.
The next one is the Shea Boulevard widening, and so this is from Palisades to Technology. And this is a design concept report. So the total for this would be $130,000. $90,000 of that would come from a grant and $40,000 of that would be from CIP. So the purpose of this is to determine the layout of the arterial roadways, bike lanes, sidewalks, and right-of-way and drainage requirements for this area for basically a four-lane road through this area.
Mayor?
Yes?
How, how long is the grant? Does the grant run out at some point?
Randy, do you remember what the grant term is?
Randy, and Mayor and Council, the, the grant runs through 2025, but in that time we have to expand not only for the design concept report, but also for the design and also for the construction of all the grant funds that are there.
Okay, for the improvements and all that.
I didn't understand that. Did you say construction as well?
Yes.
And any idea how long construction takes, something like a couple of years, two, three years?
Well, it depends on how we, how we break this project up into, into projects and.
Into phases.
Yeah.
Um, this is something that I think that with the grant covering the, the cost for the design, I think this is something that I would go forward and at least get that portion done and have it, if it has to sit on a shelf, sit on a shelf. But I think that, that's something, I know that there's some concerns about widening. We've heard from residents before, but I think at least if we can get the design, it's something we need to do, it's an investment. So, and I know, I know there's potential, Randy's indicating that we might lose some of the construction dollars if it's not done by 2025.
That's correct. One, one of the main things on this that we would like to do upfront is we periodically have offers of developers putting in fill for us. We don't know if we need more or not at this point. So that'll, that'll answer that question, whether, whether we should continue accepting offers of fill, for example. And also, Meg will probably be going out for additional half-cent sales tax extension in the next couple of years. We don't know whether we have enough money to complete Shea Boulevard with the money that we have or not.
So you lost me on this half cent. What's that?
Oh, the, the grant funding is, comes out of the half-cent sales tax.
Oh, 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 okay.
It's going to be coming back to voters for reauthorization, and so right now they're trying to wrap up and, and kind of get close to finalizing that project, or that half-cent sales tax program, so.
It's Prop 400?
Yes, uh-huh.
That's 2020? When does that go back up for vote?
Uh, I mean, we don't know when Meg's going to send it to a vote. My guess is 2021, but.
Mag is getting close. They've talked about it at the regional council and at the MAG management committee, and they're, they're wanting to go pretty soon. I believe they want to do it in 2020 is the plan.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Randy.
The next project is the town hall improvements, and so that is the room right behind you. There have been discussions recently about what that space may or may not be used for, but we do believe that the project cost is pretty accurate on that.
It's, you know, it's probably inflated. I mean, when we say accurate, there's, there's costs that we have to put in, you know, standalone AC and such, but when Dennis met with us, he thinks that probably we can do it pretty much on the cheap and it'll probably be considerably less than $116,000. But at least that's a placeholder at this point, and if the council wanted to reduce that, they can certainly reduce that. I didn't mean, I didn't mean it like on the cheap and associated your name with that. I apologize.
Value engineer.
Yes, thank you.
Value engineer.
Jason, did I really understand you to say we don't know what we're going to do with it?
Would you repeat the question? I didn't hear all of it.
Maybe I didn't hear it correctly, but I thought you said we didn't know what we would be doing with the space.
Well, there was some discussion in regards to whether or not it would be used by economic development and possibly an aide to the economic development director, or possibly use for legal staff.
Yeah, so right now, at the time that this was put together, we didn't know what was going on with, you know, legal. And so while we would like to have a legal up on the second floor in the administration area, that might mean that some staff, economic development, might have to move downstairs. We still think that, you know, Scott does have an economic development analyst that he's going to intend to fill after July, and so we're trying to find space for him upstairs. There's also been discussion about a communications director, and so we're trying to find space upstairs for this.
You know, we've said this before, some things are absolutely necessary and some things are nice to have. To me, this is a nice to have.
Yeah, I think we just had it as a placeholder, something for the future, and, and then we had put it there after we found out we were not going to go joint with the chamber on the tourism, so.
Right.
We needed something of our own to do, so.
So is the desire of the council, we can make this change now? You want to just put this in an out year and it just sits there?
I move to put this in an out year and it just sit there?
The word is deferred indefinitely.
Second.
All right, all in favor of deferring indefinitely? Aye, okay.
Thank you.
Aye.
Four Peaks Playground.
The next one is Four Peaks Park Playground upgrades. And I'm not real familiar with this, so if you have a lot of questions, it's going to be.
Here she comes.
Raquel?
Yes.
Yes, this is just one photo. I don't know if you can see that pretty clearly, but this park in general needs to have some rehabilitation efforts. This is a, actually an ongoing request that will spread over multiple years through the CIP. We're starting off with $100,000 request to get some of the playground amenities up to grade, as well as address ADA accessibility and some other unsightly issues that we have out there at the park. We've had a number of requests from local residents regarding the basketball fencing. We've had another request, again, about accessibility. This park was always part of the school. It was part of Four Peaks Elementary, and then when that school closed, it became a more accessible park for the community. However, it's not situated in that way, and so it is difficult to access, and it has not received the TLC like most of our other parks have.
One of the items that we would include in this is the parking lot that is, what's the street that's right adjacent to it?
Cal, Calabasas.
Thanks, thanks, Councilmember DePorter.
Nick's Hood.
It's, it's really the parking lot that he just described, and it's right adjacent to the Boys and Girls Club, but not the one that everybody uses, the other parking lot. We believe that if we cut through an access point there, that this would be better for people, it would be the closest to the playground. And so that would be part of this project. And then we also have, is it the fencing on the other end of the park?
Correct. It would be the fencing over near the basketball area, sort of if you are familiar with the property, the behind the EBIT, behind the school, there's a basketball court back there. There's a number of other amenities within the park that would be addressed as well if this was an ongoing funded project. To Town Manager Miller's point, the access through the parking lot between, and that parking lot is between the Boys and Girls Club and the EBIT property, if we do install that, with that, it would actually, in addition to being easier access, it would actually address a major issue we have over there, which is vandalism. This playground in general is a bit remote. It's, it's kind of down in a gully, it's very hard to see. So some of our local artists like to take advantage of that, and graffiti and/or often burn through a lot of our property. So better visibility would serve to hopefully help diminish that issue as well.
How much of?
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilman DePorter?
Sorry for interrupting. I, I was just going to say, I applaud the effort of staff to put that cut through in that parking lot. Ever since we inherited that playground, I don't think people know that it's part of Four Peaks. I think a lot of people in the community, especially in that neighborhood, believe it's just part of the Boys and Girls Club, or it's not, and it's certainly not easy to access. So before I would install or use any money to upgrade any playground equipment or anything like that, I would be looking more into access and ease of ADA and people being able to get into the park. So I applaud those efforts. Thank you.
And how much of this park is, belongs to the, do we know the separation between what belongs to the school and what belongs to us?
We do, we do. And the, the entire playground is part of our property. We have the dividing lines both between the Boys and Girls Club and the EBIT property, the school property.
Do they have any plan to upgrade their park?
Not that I'm aware of at this time. I know there's been discussions, but it, it really has minimal impact on the playground area for us.
And what about this volleyball court? Are we actually putting that in now or, because the neighborhood really doesn't want that fence up?
The volleyball court is already in existence. It's actually playable at this point. I mean, it has net, it's there, it's sanded.
Does anybody use it?
On occasion, on occasion.
Because the neighborhood would really like to have that fence down.
I'm sure that's something we could look at as well. There's a number of other questions that go along with that, whether it, and as well as the fencing that's around the basketball court, which is rusted quite a bit. It's, it's pretty unsightly.
Yeah, I just, I, I mean, I'm sorry we have to even put off any of this project for them. This has been a neighborhood that has been so incredibly patient. How many years did they wait before we got that bus barn taken down, which was a horrible eyesore for them? And they were so patient, they were willing to just take screening for a while, and then that shredded and it looked horrible. And we finally did that for them. I mean, they realized that we can't do the whole park, but I wish we could do a few things, just to, this is a neighborhood park and the kids are using it. And it, it, when we look at all of our other parks and how much we've put into it and made them pretty much pristine, some of them, like Fountain Park and Desert Vista looks great. I mean, I think the dog park looks better than this park. I really wish that we could do.
This is the neglected, we call this amongst staff as the have-not park.
And, and yet this is a park which has more kids using it than any other park. And now we're using it a lot more for the back-to-school bash and.
We do, we utilize it for a number of events. It's, it's one of those, it's a park, because of its location, is often not visible to a lot of our community members, and folks make the assumption that it's not used, and that's just not true.
Right. So is there anything we can do to, 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 I know we want to take things out of the projects, out of the, but is there anything we can do for the neighborhood to do a few little things for them for this park, since they have to wait so long for total renovation?
Well, one of the things I might suggest, the council just went ahead and deferred indefinitely the town hall improvements. If you wanted to supersize this and, and make it $216,000, we could certainly do a lot more. I know Councilmember Magazine's about ready to take exception to me saying that, but.
He doesn't have kids.
We just recently.
Little ones.
We just recently did the playground upgrade over at Golden Eagle Park, and what was that cost, just to do that improvement?
Uh, just on, it was about $90,000.
So, I mean, it, it doesn't go very far. So I think that that might be something we might want to seriously consider.
So, okay, aside from Councilman Magazine, does everybody feel about this, that I would really like to do something for this neighborhood? I have never had people in a neighborhood be so patient and just so nice about it. I mean, we, sometimes that's a bad thing. I mean, we get people yelling and then they get what they want, and here we have a neighborhood that just is just waiting and waiting and waiting and hoping they could get at least something. Let's give them something.
Mayor, if I may, I was able to spend the afternoon out there with Justin and our park supervisor, Kevin, yesterday. We were out there for quite a while, taking a look at some of the issues, particularly, we were really looking at the ADA accessibility because that is, that is an issue here. But we happened to go out to the basketball courts and the volleyball court area, and the basketball courts appear to be original to the school, which to fathom a guess is a couple of decades. And they physically have cracks and holes that are, I mean, you could fit your whole foot into them.
I know, I've been to them.
They are, they're, they're rather unsightly compared to how we do maintain our other parks. And I know our parks crew are very proud of what they do and would like to, to bring this, this park up to par with the rest.
Mayor? I'm going to try again. Mayor?
Councilman Magazine?
This comes under the heading, again, of just getting information, asking questions. Based upon the description of it, would it make any sense to do any of this in phases? Is there something that's more important, one or two, more important than other things, for example?
Well, this is the first of what we would hope to be a couple of phases, to be, to be fair. This is a $100,000 request over the next five years to total roughly $500,000 worth of efforts in this park. That, that is how far behind this park is.
Also, we have lights that need to be replaced there, and that's another neglected item.
Yes, that doesn't account for the lights.
That is, uh-huh, because the very, very bright lights were installed many years ago, and it's, the neighborhood has to live with that, the really bright lights. And of course, now with our dark sky designation, that doesn't comply. So can we, so what do you, can you make a suggestion for us, Grady? Can we, can we move some money and help the neighborhood?
You, the council has the ability, this is your capital improvement budget, so if you wanted to move money around, one of the things, I just saw at the previous slide, if you wanted to take the $116,000, doesn't affect the, the total for next year and just put it into this project, you would, you would make more of a, I think, an attack on this issue that we have over there.
Madam Mayor?
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. What I would like to see is, I, I agree that it's time that we dress this park up, and what I would like to see is a well-thought-out plan. You're talking about a five-year plan.
Yes, sir.
I would like to be able to see a, a five-year plan.
Sure.
So we could go ahead and appropriate the funds that's needed to actually bring this park up to a standard that Fountain Hills would be proud of.
Absolutely, we can put that together.
And then is that, that's dovetailing on the master plan for this park, correct?
Correct. We do have a master plan that was done a number of years ago for this park, which is roughly priced out at that time, just over $4 million to do the complete master plan. Clearly, that isn't feasible right now.
We're not striving for that at all.
No. And there's a number of things that have changed from that master plan originally. I'll give you the, for instance, that the, in the plan, the basketball courts and the tennis courts were supposed to be swapped and placed on opposite ends of the park. Once we redid the tennis courts and we had the grant funding to do that, and now they are in pristine condition over there, that doesn't make sense to, to do that any longer. So there are a number of things that probably wouldn't happen or be consistent with that plan, but in terms of a five-year focus for a capital improvements, to, to dress up what we can do, we can certainly put that together.
We'll bring that forward.
Thank you.
And Councilman Yates?
So on this specifically, though, the $100,000, you mentioned ADA walkways, could you elaborate on what this would go towards right now?
Sure. Identified, as we were walking out there, the, the project to create the, what we're calling the cut-through, the opening, the welcome point, if you will, the access from that parking lot. Right now, there's no access to this playground, other than parking and coming down a stairwell that's quite hidden, or parking in one of the other parking lots and cutting across a ball field. That, heaven forbid, if that was in use, how, how do you get through? It's, it's just not laid out for public access. It was laid out for school, for the school. So we're trying to kind of Band-Aid that a bit. What we would look to do is create that access point, as well as a walkway, so that you can access the different amenities, as well as create and complete the walkway from the existing walkway that you see here in the photo, that would come around to the parking lot beside the tennis courts. That is the most reasonable access point for ADA accommodations. And we were talking about what that might mean and how we would do that, and then hopefully that would also lead to better access to the ball fields. And we'd like to use some of the funding to address those, address some of the issues address some of the issues at the ball field, so that they are more consistent with the fields that are over at, um, Golden Eagle Park as well.
So, Madam Mayor, so to Vice Mayor Brown's point, would you rather us wait and leave that money hanging, and then you come back with a plan, or...
I thought you said you had a plan.
We do, we, we can certainly put it-
The master of the whole thing.
Well, if, if, the idea, if the consensus here is, yes, we're gonna find five hundred thousand dollars to move forward, you, for the next multi, you know, the next few years, whether that's at a hundred dol, at a hundred thousand a clip, or we're gonna try to put it in a three-year package, however that works out, we can certainly show you what we'd like to do with that five hundred thousand dollars. It includes what I just mentioned, as well as, um, upgrading some of the play equipment here. Um, the swings here are original, again, to the park. Um, this is the last park that has sand, um, which we all know is, like we said, is, has a number of issues. Um, we would like to address the basketball court, um, that I just mentioned, that needs refinishing, as well as the fencing, and there is also no shade or Ramonas at this park, um, to make them more family-friendly for picnics and gatherings and things like that. So, we'd like to consider adding that to the plan as well.
The other thing that we've talked about, too, um, it's hard to tell in this picture, but when you go out there, and I know Councilmember DePorter has seen this with his family, um, the area where the swing sets, and there's actually two sets of swing sets, I think you might be able to see the other one in the background.
Yeah.
We really want to actually reduce the size. The square area is just huge.
Yeah.
And from a maintenance standpoint, it doesn't make a lot of sense. Um, it looks like, when you look at it, it's like a half acre or an acre. It's just, it's just humongous. So, from a maintenance standpoint, trying to fill it up with the appropriate, um, with bark or whatever, it, it's just way too big. So, we want to reduce the size of that.
Yeah. And what this would help us do is, um, if you've had a chance to see the new structure at Golden Eagle Park, um, what we have is a, a really great fall radius here, so we could really put in something that is, um, modern and attractive, and would be a, a real beacon to our families here in town. Um, it could be really cool, is what we really have the means for, um, if we can do that.
So, Grady, do we need a motion to be able to use the, um, town hall improvement money for the playground?
You know, um, I think what I'm hearing is, you still want to see a plan, so let's do this. Let's just leave it as is, and we'll come forth, um, during our April, um, budget session, and we'll share that with you. And then you can make that determination at that meeting.
Well, how can we make a plan if we, if we know already that we'd have this extra money? Wouldn't that be better to have that knowledge first before we make the plan, so we know how much money we have to...
Well, you, you actually have, I mean, we're not spending every dollar that we have in our capital fund for next year, so you-
Right.
-have available resources that you can allocate. That's what we're trying to say.
Okay. I'd just like to give the people in the neighborhood some hope, knowing that there is some extra money in there. Um...
Well, I think at this point, I mean, we have communicated with, um, Lynn Barlow, I believe is one of the residents there, that has been trying to keep up in touch and figure out where we are. She was very pleased that we were investing a hundred thousand dollars, but I'm not sure she realizes a hundred thousand doesn't go very far.
Doesn't go very far.
Right.
But with an extra hundred-and-sixteen thousand, it may be just not access, but a little bit that we could do with the equipment. Maybe we could also reach out to some of the service organizations that have helped us with playground equipment in the past?
That's actually an excellent idea.
Maybe they might be interested in helping us out, and then, of course, there's next year's grant from Republic Services. Would also be something that a group could take up as their project. Councilman Tollis?
Uh, just, thank you, Mayor. I just have a question. Is the Boys and Girls Club the predominantly using this park now, that we have a school that is, is being rented to EBIT, which is more of an upper-level, uh, teenage, uh, high school age? So, you know, the original use being an elementary school, this was used for small children.
Correct.
So, is, is the Boys and Girls Club now predominantly using this, or is this really a gathering place that young kids are actually going on a regular basis to play at this park?
The Boys and Girls Club are avid users. I mean, they're regular users on a day-to-day basis. Um, after school, you know, after school time, kids that you, that are Boys and Girls Club members do use this, um, facility quite a bit. You know, they're out there in the afternoons, after school time. Um, but to say that it's, that's the only users wouldn't be quite fair. There are, uh, the neighborhood does use this amenity quite a bit. Neighborhood kids do ride their bikes there. Um, we were out there just yesterday afternoon. Um, the Boys and Girls Club was not there, but there were a number of moms and, with their kids, strollers, a lot of folk, I mean, it is a pretty, it is a pretty well-used park. I think, like I said, it's just often out of sight, out of mind for a lot of folks, unless you live in the community there. Um, but the Boys and Girls Club are regular users of it.
Okay. So, Mayor, this parcel of land, just if I'm understanding, and I looked at this, you know, the town of Fountain Hills owns a sliver going through the property where the Boys and Girls Club owns land, and then the Four Peaks Elementary School land, for the, which the school district owns. Has there ever been any discussion of some sort of an abandonment of this park, and, and allowing the Boys and Girls Club to take ownership of this parcel, and for them to pay for this, seeing they're the ones who are losing it the most?
I can't say that, that, I've, I've not been part of any discussion that was similar to that. Um, see, that would be news to me if there was some type of discussion.
Yeah, and, you know, I mean, we didn't even get into the ball fields, but the ball fields and the, and the, um, the grounds are used heavily, uh, for soccer, they're used by Little League for practice. So, I mean, it, it's used by a lot of different end-users, not just the Boys and Girls Club.
So, the, I, I understand, uh, that, that, what I'm referring to is this sliver between the elementary school and the Boys and Girls Club, that has very limited access. You have to park, uh, either the Boys and Girls Club or the elementary school. Otherwise, you're parking at the parking lot that's around the corner where the soccer field is, okay? So, you have to walk to this particular area. I, I have a hard time, in, in Council Magazine, I'm, I'm in your court here, spending a half a million dollars to, to put into this park, when it, it really has a lot of issues, not just the equipment, and not just the sand. It has a lot of issues, that if we can partner with that Boys and Girls Club, that may be a perfect solution long-term. And we can focus the funding on the fields, which are used by the Little Leagues, but that are used by a lot of organizations in town. But this little sliver of this park, I don't know, maybe there's a way we can alleviate the cost to the town.
Mayor?
Councilman Magazine?
Uh, colleagues, I will probably end up supporting this, but we're talking two-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand dollars, when you add the one hundred thousand with a hundred-and-sixteen thousand from the room in the back. Um, I have some difficulty making decisions on an individual project in isolation. Um, when the budget comes out, we're gonna have a green sheet, a very long list of items, uh, that, that we may or may not be able to afford. And as worthy as this may be, and as I said, I will probably support it, I just think it's prudent to look at one project against all the others that can't be funded, and make a, uh, and make a, uh, an informed decision. Uh, so, I would hope that we don't vote on this tonight.
Well, I'll just say one last thing on this, and that is, this is our neighborhood where we have the most kids of anywhere in town, and it is a, a park that is not kid-friendly. And if we're gonna attract families and say to them, "We have these wonderful parks", the kids don't want to walk around the lake. They want to play, and they need the fields, the basketball courts. Um, this neighborhood wants their park, and they've waited so very long and so patiently, and now they're last on the list, and I don't want to take this away from them and say, "No, now we don't have the money, we can't do it." If we want to be a family-friendly community, then we have to look at each of the individual communities. So, people that live around Fountain Park, they want Fountain Park to look beautiful. We can understand that, 'cause that's what they're looking at. People that live around Four Peaks Park, they want to use the park. They want it to be a nice park, and they haven't had one. By the time we get around to fixing it, those kids will have kids. And we don't want them to leave. So, I, I think it's an investment in their neighborhood. They have been asking this for a long time. I don't want to put this off anymore, not for them. And Councilman DePorter, I don't know if you want to chime in, you live in the neighborhood, but I know you've been going through this with the neighbors also.
Yeah, but thank you, Mayor. I mean, I, I, I agree with you a hundred percent here. I mean, this, when you look at the parks, uh, in our town, I think Grady put it perfectly, the have and the have-nots. I mean, there's, this is like a, this, this park looks like it's in another town, uh, the way it's been treated compared to others. I like, I like Vice Mayor Brown's approach, I think putting together a five-year plan, and, you know, I, I think tackling the most crucial element first, maybe not the aesthetic one, maybe the ADA, um, one first, I think would be, would be the most prudent thing. But, I mean, I would like to see their five-year plan. But I do think that, to Mayor's, to Mayor's point, there, there's a lot of, kind of, kids in those neighborhoods, and it's because they're the cheapest houses to buy into in the community. So, this is our entry point into Fountain Hills for a lot of younger families. So, to have that park looking as sharp as possible would be in our best interest.
Okay. Can we go on? Justin, you're up again.
The next one is the video surveillance cameras, and, and this, again, is a multi-year phasing, and so, um, due to some additional cost for, um, Golden Eagle and Fountain Park, we were increasing it just for one year. Next year, an additional fifty thousand, because we have determined that the cost to install the cameras necessary to protect the town's property, it will not be addressed in the fifty thousand dollars. So, this will address, um, Golden Eagle Park, Four Peaks Park, and Fountain Park with this funding.
Wow.
Okay.
Excuse me. The Fountain Hills Boulevard widening. So, this is, again, a design concept report, that will cover the area, um, that is basically from Segundo down to Pinto. And as you'll recall, we are currently, and, and it was in an earlier slide, we are doing the shoulder paving and drainage improvements along this area. And part of that project, the town engineer and myself, um, ensured that design of the pavement thickness would accommodate this widening in the future, if council decides to move forward with it after the design concept report is finished.
Keep going.
The next one is the sidewalk infill program. And this particular side right here, we've selected, um, in the top right-hand side, there's a little area that runs along, um, La Montana, that we most recently did the infill, and we use STPA funding for that. And so, the original estimates for that, for some engineers, was incredibly high, and I don't have that dollar total in front of me, but it was above a hundred thousand dollars. Staff was able to work with the contractor to have this work done, and it, it comes out to about four dollars a square foot for the concrete.
Wow.
Um, but we got the whole thing done, including the curb-opening ramp, and the scupper that allows the drainage from the nearby residents to drain through there. And we encourage you to take a look at it. Um, and the total for this one...
There's a hundred thousand.
...is eleven thousand dollars to infill that, which consisted, um, of seven-hundred-and-fifty, um, square feet for the Mag 230 sidewalk, modified scupper, inline sidewalk, um, and the removal and replacement of some of the existing curb there. So, the total cost for that section was eleven thousand dollars, which we think is a very good price in today's market, and we are fortunate to enjoy these low prices. The contract we use is a piggyback cooperative use from Chandler, and so obviously, the original numbers for the Chandler contract showed a considerably larger quantity, but the contractor, um, has agreed to the pricing for this. And so, we think this project moving forward under the current conditions is very valuable, and will, and will provide an additional asset to the town in walking paths where they currently do not exist.
How does, I may have missed it, but how does that relate to the hundred thousand project cost on the screen?
That is what we were asking for, for next year. So, my intent is to demonstrate to you, we can do this, um, relatively uncomplicated section for about eleven thousand dollars. And so, based on that type, so, it's a minimal amount of grading, and a minimal amount of changes, and some just minor landscaping, we can accomplish about, well, seven-hundred feet roughly of concrete there for eleven thousand dollars. And so, go ahead.
No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Um, if we had a hundred thousand dollars, there are numerous locations, and the staff, and obviously the mayor and council also, have received, um, concerns and questions regarding areas where the sidewalk starts and stops for no apparent reason. Well, the obvious reason would be that it wasn't constructed, but there are numerous reasons, underlying reasons for that.
That was good, Justin.
Including-
Try to see if we're awake.
Why is it that sidewalk there wasn't constructed?
Ah-ha.
Including, but not limited to the fact that, um, the developer may have, may not have been granted a waiver, and deposited some money for something to be built at a later date, or simply they said it was too expensive and unnecessary, and it wasn't constructed. So, this is an opportunity to correct some of that.
Madam Mayor?
Um, I guess to your point, you're showing us, oh my God, we have this great cooperative, you can get concrete done very inexpensively, and so you're gonna leverage this, comparing it to this project, to do ten projects?
If council approves it.
Mayor? Is this not a nice-to-have situation? Is there any safety issue, other than the eleven thousand?
And, and I'm not gonna be able to address everything town-wide, but there are certainly locations where we have narrower streets, where currently the pedestrians are forced to walk on the street. Um, we have very limited nighttime lighting, and a very active community. And so, I would not consider this a nice-to-have, but a needed in some locations, and that doesn't cover all the locations.
But I, I'd, I'd like to see an analysis that indicates what's really needed, um, because it sounds like you're not really sure.
We have a twenty-year plan, and we have a map that shows that, and we would certainly be willing to share that with the mayor and council, if they would like to see it.
But it shows where there are no sidewalks, or shows where there's a safety issue?
It currently shows where there is not a sidewalk. And so, we, we can certainly, um, visit the element of safety. Obviously, any time a pedestrian has to leave a, a partially constructed sidewalk and enter the pavement section, it becomes a safety issue.
I agree. But I think we, I think we really ought to, personally, I think we should narrow it down and, and separate out the safety issues from the rest of it.
Well, I think we really get into that, 'cause I, I know, I see a number of people in town that are motorized, uh, scooters and, and wheelchairs, and I, I think it is a safety issue, because they have to actually be in the right-of-way or, or in the streets. And that, seriously, you, you have sidewalks like Fountain Hills Boulevard that just end, and all of a sudden, they're in the street, and that's not safe for them.
No, I'm, I'm not disagreeing.
No, I know, you just want to see, like, a plan, and, and which ones are ranked based on safety, perhaps.
Exactly, exactly.
Yes, we are understanding.
You'd like, okay, we'll certainly return with the grading process.
Madam Mayor?
Is there a timeframe on the, uh, joint contract?
Um, the one that we most recently entered into is for an additional four years.
Okay, so we have some, okay.
This is the Civic Center Drainage Improvements. Um, you'll originally recall, when this was brought to council, that there was a pretty elaborate, um, installation of drainage that would include extending a location on the corner of La Montana and El Lago, where we currently receive water from the west side of the road, and, um, then it slowly but surely perks out through a small pipe, and it included tying in the Civic Center drainage primarily from the library and museum area, and that parking lot, into what is now a dead end that would have been extended along the southern boundary of the community garden, and then tied back into an area, um, that is just south of Park Place. This current proposal is nothing like that. What I'm proposing is that council consider this project, and my intent is to dig a Maxwell Drywell, for lack of a better description, it's a French drain, at the end of the drainage structure, where, um, it is currently clogged with concrete, because the detention basin where the library, excuse me, the, the garden is currently residing, was filled in. And so, what we want to do is, we want to drain the stagnant water out of this area, and get it into the ground and allow it to perk. And I think that, and this is a relatively high-cost based, um, or a high estimate, based on some unknowns, but I believe, and this will be done, uh, in-house by staff, for much less than this. But I think it's very, very important. Currently, what we do is, we ask the Fountain Hills Sanitary District to bring their large Vector truck down. They remove the grate and vacuum the stagnant water out of it, um, especially after a storm event, but occasionally, um, we may or may not have a, a, you know, an air-conditioned leak or a water leak, and so that water stays in there and becomes stagnant.
Justin, um, your predecessor, um, had identified this as a project, this has been a project that's been in the CIP before, but what was the amount? This is a lower-cost option that we have, but I believe, wasn't it closer to two-hundred or two-hundred?
Two-hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I was gonna say three-hundred.
Yeah, so I, I applaud Justin for trying to come up with a, a smarter mousetrap, and a lower-cost mousetrap to get to the same resolution.
We are certainly able to accomplish the primary issue here, and that- We are certainly able to accomplish the primary issue here and that is stagnant water standing in a drainage structure that is clogged, for lack of a better description, capped off.
Councilman Magazine?
Jason, you said you thought you could do it for a lot less, which just sort of prompted something I've been thinking about. When I look at all these projects, I see thirty thousand, fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand. These are all sort of even numbers, like a ladder. How do you come up with these? Are we talking ten percent more, ten percent less? Do we have any idea?
The numbers that you see are an estimate based on the knowledge of myself and other staff members and the assistance of professionals in that field that we were able to reach out to and get a general idea of the cost. None of these in regards to the project themselves are a hard number until in some cases we go to bid or we ask for someone to provide a proposal to complete that. So the majority of these numbers are estimates.
Grady, if you look back at the last budget or two, particularly the CIP, where you have these estimates of fifty, a hundred, a hundred and fifty, do you have any sense as to how we ended up? Did we end up spending more, spending less?
You know what? With the exception of what we just had experience with both Adaro and also the fire station, fire station came in obviously very high. We've been very fortunate then, most of ours have been under budget. We've had a few that are over, but the way that the fund works is that everything has balanced out in the end. But my sense of this is that we've been pretty right on. A lot of it is because we have a, we've had an engineer's estimate in the past that was pretty much right on. But in this high-cost construction environment that we're experiencing right now on like buildings, vertical buildings and such, costs are going up. But on a lot of these infrastructure types of improvements that you've seen, I think we've been right on target. And the staff does spend a lot of time researching costs before they put together their CIP project budget.
Jason, this is not intended as any kind of criticism, I just want to see how we get there, how we get to these numbers and whether or not, I don't want to suddenly see that we have to spend another six hundred thousand dollars on, like on the fire station or that we need to come up with another half a million dollars in the aggregate for the ones that we approve, that's all.
The intent of staff is not to mislead the mayor and council. We certainly do our best.
I certainly would not imply that at all.
The last one, or rather the next one, is miscellaneous drainage and we touched on this in the seventeen eighteen. So we're asking council to consider an additional fifty thousand dollars for next year. And again, this handles primarily just minor things that we need to do that are minimal. So in this particular case, what it's showing here is an extension of two culvert pipes on Suoro Boulevard to accommodate some drainage that comes off of the golf course. But we have several minor ones that we would like to do or move forward on. And again, this is an estimate based on what we believe we need. But over the last several years, we have not come anywhere close to spending even half or the majority of this money. We have been under and in some years spent none.
Sorry, I gave you a new name. I said Jason, I meant Justin.
I thought he might be sitting behind me, so I didn't want to be impolite. This one is actually the Golden Eagle concrete replacement. And so this is in and around the dugouts and the ball fields. What we have here is a considerable amount of heaving and settling of concrete that has created some trip hazards and we think this is a priority. And when I say we, the town staff, this is a priority and this area needs to be fixed. There is extensive damage in this area that has gone on for years. There are numerous attempts to make patches or grind it down or reroute some of the foot traffic, but this is pretty serious. If you've had an opportunity to go down there and see it, you certainly understand why we are bringing this to you for consideration.
Park supervisor Kevin Snipes and the director brought this to my attention. I walked the site with them and it's really bad. And we're at a point now where we've been able to get our softball tournaments coming back and it's great because we're starting to re-establish our reputation, but this from a risk management standpoint really concerns me. And I think we're, we would easily lose more than fifty thousand dollars in a lawsuit for someone that injured themselves seriously. So I think that this would be a really good investment.
Also, and in front of this, the community services director and her staff, Kevin, they came together with myself and a local contractor and we actually put in drainage improvements in these two dugouts that historically flooded and they were able to pull that funding, which was very minimal, right out of their budget. And by doing the majority of the work in-house, again with the cooperative contract that we share with Chandler, we've already made improvements that will at least mitigate some of these challenges in regards to the concrete in the future. This one is the highway safety improvement program. Basically, this is a Hисп. grant and this is to replace the smaller and less reflective stop signs on our arterial streets. This is a one-hundred percent funding grant of forty-six thousand eight hundred dollars and we would really like the council to consider moving forward with this because this is very important in regards to safety.
So do you really think this is going to get people to stop, finally?
We would like to think that it's going to make improvements in that area.
Could we like a neon sign? This means you, we're watching?
We're limited, we have to, we have to stick to the stop portion of it. But they will certainly be larger in diameter and they will be much more reflective.
Okay. Best you can do, huh?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's grant money, thank you.
Yes, it is grant money. This one came before the mayor and council last fall and they approved it. And so we are already underway this year with the design on this. And so next year, with the exception of the improvements to the driveway on Avenue of the Fountains in front of the post office, so that change will be made permanent. So we will pull that curb back and allow outbound left turns from the post office. That will be permanent. The next portion of it, which is actually in the intersection of Avenue of the Fountains and La Montana, the direction that was given to staff was to do this in a temporary nature. So let me explain that. Staff intends to do the signing and striping that was approved by council or the direction given to council, but there will not be any permanent concrete. So all of the elements that you see in yellow will be number nine dagmires. And a number nine dagmire is about ten inches in diameter, they call them turtle shells, and about six inches high. The reason that we've selected number nine dagmires as opposed to wheel stops or curb stops is because wheel stops and curb stops, one, they crumble whenever they're run over by large trucks and also they have a tendency to do damage to vehicles that do not see them or decide that they can make it over them. And unfortunately, despite the fact that it may or may not be a motorist responsibility, they intend to come to the town for payment for these vehicles. So the portion in the intersection will be temporary in nature until a decision is made as to whether or not this concept is going to work. And obviously if it works, then we would come back to the mayor and council for their direction on making this more permanent and then the portions in yellow will be concrete.
I think that's a good plan.
So here's the, the project balance from the seventeen eighteen carried forward is two million five hundred sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven, less the proposed projects for eighteen nineteen, one million six hundred ninety-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-five. The ending available balance as of six thirty, if these projects are approved, will be eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand and two dollars.
Mayor?
Councilman Magazine?
Can I ask Craig a question?
How long do you, how long do you want to be here?
What a comedian. Eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand ending balance. Do you have any kind of an estimate as to what it would be a year later?
It would depend on what council wants this to spend a year later.
Well, I understand, but...
It's not going to grow by much, couple hundred thousand at most probably.
The big generator here is construction sales tax, correct?
Yes. Yes.
And you fig, I know you figured in Adaro, you figured in Park Place, you figured in just about everything that's on the drawing boards, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And Justin, we're going to go through these pretty quickly, so if you don't mind, I think you just leave the page up and not have to go through every single one.
These are future projects, this would be the nineteen twenty and these are ongoing, so this would be the miscellaneous drainage, Fountain Park, that sort of stuff. And you'll note that some of these are multi-year, some of them have partial funding, some of them are unfunded. If you have any questions about any of the items on this page, I will certainly do my best to answer them.
Yeah, which is the sport, sports field lighting? Is that all the lighting? No, what is it, Rachel? That's for Four Peaks Park, unfunded, okay.
Were we talking about a few million dollars?
Yeah, as you could see, if we were starting off the year ending at eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand going forward, there's not enough money to take on these projects. But that's why we didn't spend a lot of time and I think we just really want to spend more time on next years than what you see in the future years.
And probably more importantly, with a couple hundred thousand dollars added to eight hundred thousand, we're not going to be able to touch this list.
That's exactly right, so no sense spending a lot of time with it.
The next slide is also for nineteen twenty and you'll see in here each one of them individually. You'll also note that some of them are multi-year and some of them are funded and some of them are not. This is for the years twenty and twenty-one. Several of these you've already seen as they are ongoing. The one that you've not seen is Fire Station Three. A pocket park on the west side, which is also in that general area. This is for twenty-one and twenty-two. And this, the one of them in here is the Four Peaks Park phasing, we had discussed that earlier. Ms. Goodwin indicated that that was a five-year if council gave consideration and approval to it. This is the twenty-two, twenty-three and again, several of these are ongoing and multi-year with the exception being again Fire Station Number Three and the Pocket Park West.
So some of these you have listed grants already, is that because you're anticipating that you could get the grant, Rachel, yes?
Yeah.
Okay. Like the Four Peaks?
We would hope to reach out to at least apply for some grant funding. The biggest grant funding that we've identified is usually the Sports and Tourism Authority that is on an every other year basis, so that's why sometimes it's indicated and sometimes it's not. But we all know that that's obviously subject to winning the grant award first.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Magazine?
Grady, how, or Justin, how did you come up with the ones that are under nineteen twenty, well, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, et cetera?
They were, they were already shown and passed and so they have just moved forward. And so a lot of these projects were already initiated or identified in the long-term capital improvement projects. And so they were placed there based on guidance from mayor and council and/or the town manager as to where they appear in the future years?
Well, obviously we can change this. I mean, if we, we can move something from twenty twenty-one, move it up or move something else down depending upon...
This is a five-year capital improvement budget of which really the second through fifth year, most of which is unfunded. So we have the Fire Station in there, Fire Station Three, and my approach on that would be if state trust land develops, that would be the trigger. And we would negotiate a development agreement with the developer to actually put the Fire Station in and we would reimburse. So that's how we would handle that, but obviously that's the gift that keeps on giving because to staff it, it's one point three million dollars a year just to staff it.
All right. Okay.
The last slide here is the ongoing...
One second, Justin, Councilmember Tollis.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question regarding the Fire Station Number Two and the property on Suoro right now and what that value is and what the plan for the town is.
Councilmember Tollis, I believe the town manager would be better to suit that question. And in regards to public works, we have not made any determination as to what will happen to that property. We've certainly provided some information to the town manager.
And I didn't quite understand the question, Councilmember Tollis, which, which location?
What's the value of the old fire department and what can we do with it? Liquidate it? What would you do?
So the council, when this came up, and I believe it might have been prior to your time on the council, Councilmember Tollis, there was an indication that they wanted to sell it. There's always been in the parks master plan area, in that area to have a park. I'm not sure the council wants to put a pocket park or park in that area. Obviously we're seeing we don't have money to put in a park. But the idea is that when we get very close, probably within the next couple of months, we're going to want to probably look at trying to sell it. We've talked about working with the county, I've made contact with the county because they also have the property where the posse is parking their vehicles in the modular and it would make sense for us to work together. I believe we currently have that zoned as residential where the Fire Station is located. But where the posse is located, I believe that is commercial? It's multifamily. So we'd want to be consistent, it would make sense for them to consider selling theirs at the same time we sold ours because then it would finish that whole area off. But if the council has a different desire and wants to do something different, we would certainly do whatever the council wanted on that.
That concludes my presentation for the current fiscal year, the upcoming year and the outlying years. And I would certainly answer any additional questions if you have them at this point.
Councilman Magazine?
Thank you.
We're, oh, go ahead.
Councilman Tollis?
I do have one comment and I, and I, it didn't get much traction here, but these partnerships such as I had suggested with the Boys and Girls Club and talking with them, I also think it's a good idea to talk to Plaza Waterfront. I think developing and finishing that back Plaza area is only going to help those businesses and as we continue to grow the downtown, if we're going to wait till twenty-two, twenty-three and we now have an influx of five hundred, six hundred new residents downtown, those businesses are not going to have enough room to really maximize their profitability, therefore increasing our sales tax revenues. So those type of projects I think really should be at the forefront important to finish.
Yeah, I absolutely agree that we should reach out to partnerships and as far as Four Peaks Park goes, you know, I think we should reach out to organizations too. They've been very generous in the past in redoing our Little Kitty Park and our Splash Park and doing so many other projects in town. I think if they know that there's a need, that we know a couple of people who are on the rotary.
Absolutely. Well, you know, I hope you don't think that the staff silence is not indicating we're wanting to do something in that area because as a small town, really it's these partnerships that really have helped the town over the years and they will continue. So I think we're definitely going to approach the Boys and Girls Club since they are a primary user of that park. And I do know that we've got these partnerships with other civic organizations, so...
I think we should approach the school as well since they own that property around EBIT and they really need to do some work there on it.
Absolutely.
Anyone else?
I have one question. Justin, I had mentioned this before and I had made some phone calls to federal government regarding the Tiger Grant. We do qualify for a Tiger Grant because of our proximity to the reservation. One of the stipulations was that we had to show that the main road that folks on the reservation were using was their main way of going in and out. And I think Fountain Hills Boulevard qualifies for that. They don't call us, I mean, that's something you have to get on the phone with. I would love to work with you on that if you need some help on that, just to see, it's as you may be familiar, the Tiger... you may be familiar, the Tiger grant is one of the biggest funding sources of highways and roads and things of that nature. So I guess I'm suggesting twofold. One, have you heard about it, or has there been any rumblings about it? And secondly, if not, I'd like to work with you on that, if you need some...
I saw something recently at a meeting last, I want to say it was like last fall, and they had some leftover Tiger grant money, but they needed shovel-ready projects ready to go.
Well, Fountain Hills Boulevard is kind of where, it's already in our plan, it may qualify, it's worth a phone call, is what I'm saying, or a few meetings.
So I think we should, and Randy, you're our point of contact with Meg on that, if you wouldn't mind following up, and we'll try to get back to you on that.
Okay.
Okay, do we have anything else to discuss, or...
We have, just quickly, we're going to make it really quick, right, Craig, on the fees?
Thank you.
Sorry about it.
All of a sudden, you're in a hurry.
You know, I debated having this in the front, so we can get through it quickly, and I should have done that.
We have a few fees that staff is recommending that we increase. A couple from Development Services, primarily to actually reflect the true cost of the staff time that is being spent to work on these things. Community Services has requested some fees for our food and event vendors when they come into town to work on our events. At the council retreat, I had suggested that we transfer the licensing of animals, dogs, back to Maricopa County, since we're the only entity in the county that is doing our own licensing. And then we noticed that in our map area that we have charged for all sizes of maps except the 8x11, so we wanted to add that in to make sure we covered all the fees.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments on the, I knew it.
I looked at this, this is great. Oh, you're talking about him? I'll make this real fast.
You said that before.
I know, I say that. What do you call it when people ask for information?
Public records requests?
That's it. Is that in here, did I miss it?
It's not in, it's a new fee. We currently already have a fee for it.
What is, what is the fee?
I don't recall, but I'm sure the town clerk knows.
It's a per-page fee. If it's electronic, we don't pay, we don't charge them.
Well, what about when somebody makes a request, and it takes staff time and legal time? And we've had a lot of that. Have we looked at what a fair cost would be to pass on to people who ask multiple, and some of multiple, same people, multiple questions, which take hours of legal time, that we end up paying for? Have we examined that?
I think it's probably a question for Matej, but my understanding is that under state law, we can't do that. So basically, the spirit of the law is that we need to, if someone requests for public records and they're readily available, we need to provide it. And that even includes the staff time to actually pull the records together, and also for the attorney to actually spend their time. So you want to...
Mayor members of the council, Brady is correct. We are statutorily authorized to charge the reasonable reproduction cost, which includes the copying, if we were to provide electronically on a CD or whatnot, but the time, staff time and attorney time is not permitted.
I know. And there are some cities that are really hurting because they're small and they have people that are constantly asking for it. And we tried to do something with the league and legislature and last few times, and we couldn't get anything through.
Craig, I, one other fee that wasn't mentioned was the, unless I'm going to miss, and if so, I apologize, was the fire inspection fee.
I'm sorry. It is listed, it's toward the bottom of this page, as we suggested at the council retreat. It takes a lot of time and effort for staff to prepare a $15 billing, so we're going to continue to do the inspections with the fire department. We're choosing not to bill the businesses. We generated about $6,000 in revenue for the year.
And our cost is probably...
Lot higher.
More.
Lot higher. Any other discussion? We don't have any speaker cards, do we?
No, Mayor.
All right, then, just entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?